If everybody's ready, let's call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting and public hearing of Wednesday, June 27, 2018. Director Abt, if you can call the roll.
Your person will take it?
I am here.
Commissioner Scanlon.
Here.
Commissioner Hannan.
Here.
Commissioner Marble.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 23, 2018, regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstained. Thank you. Any visitors? We have no visitors. Petitions, citizen requests, or communications, it looks like. But our trustee liaison is here. Do you have a report for us? Trustee said to me?
I think most of you are aware, at our last board meeting, we kind of slowed the process of the rezoning of Ogden Avenue. I apologize for not being at the meeting, but I think there was a whole train of thought that wasn't considered at your meeting on that site. Happy to discuss that if there's any questions, but I think the record's kind of clear on where we're at on that. But I think, given the unique circumstances and timing of what's going on next door, and with that property, we thought it was better to kind of slow the process a little bit and see if there's a better use for that property than what's being proposed.
Well, to be fair, we did discuss whether there was a need to keep it as commercial use.
Right. Right. Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Settey.
Yes.
Were we operating under the correct assumption that the top levels could be converted into condominiums without a zoning change?
The top levels? The top level?
Level.
I... You're asking my personal opinion. Attorney Mars stated a position. I think the top level, yes. I'm not sure about that second level. I'm not sure what would be considered ground level, frankly. If it's sub-grade ground level, or however we had the wording or not, I do think there's a question related to that.
Okay.
But the third, the top level, I think is fair to say that that could be used under the current code as residential. Yes, sir.
Have we or has the village heard anything from Loyola regarding their position on that professional building with regards to, we're a charitable organization, tax-free? Has there been any movement, I guess?
I think staff was asked to approach Loyola on that matter, and I don't know if there's an update there. One clarification that people might be confused on, if it is a nonprofit, that site will not be paying any real estate taxes. However, it doesn't result in a reduction to what the village collects. What it means is the taxes that that site, that property paid, would then be spread out to the rest of the residents. And it was a pretty meaningful number that they're paying. I don't know, Director Abt, if you have any updates on the taxes or any discussion.
I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but I mean, the EAV for that property was about $2.25 million. So, overall, that's a fairly high tax bill that would then be spread across the tax, you know, the rest of the taxing district.
Was it acquired by a hospital which would have been a nonprofit?
They were not a nonprofit hospital. No.
I don't know. Just they were owned by Vanguard, I believe. Vanguard Medical Group. They're based out in Texas, so they were for profit, so they paid them full ride.
I think the general thinking was that we need to figure out what the intent is of that owner before we really do anything in that neighborhood, because there's an opportunity. Either, in my opinion, either Loyola will push doctors into that building, which will create more demand, that then could create overflow demand whereby there may be a better use for medical office, the existing use may end up being a better use, or Loyola might say, "Listen, this is surplus real estate. We'd love to tear it down and sell it," or do something or redevelop it, in which case perhaps the current owner of that property would want to be a part of that, too. And it was clear that he hadn't explored that train of thought in his proposals. So, we wanted to give him the opportunity to do that, and we wanted the opportunity to help him do that. And we don't know, Sonia, we don't know anything about Loyola's intent with that building.
I have not been able to contact yet at this point to have that discussion.
And Airbnb might be coming back to us.
Airbnb, I don't think is coming back to you. I suggested maybe that's an idea, but I don't think it'll come back to you guys. I have personal thoughts on that, probably not worth sharing right now. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater on that. Clearly, I personally was disappointed that it was kind of thrown on the village board of, "You said we could do this, so we did it." And we clearly didn't say you could create a nuisance to your neighbors. However, we didn't really know that it was a nuisance to the neighbors until shortly before the meeting. So, it's something, as far as an enforcement issue, we need to figure out if we're going to do anything more. So, I think that we're definitely pausing on any new applications, but I'm not aware of any applications being sought or in process. But the owner clearly has a right to honor the remaining days he's got available to him, and I think, you know, they took it in the right spirit and will, you know, pay closer attention to the effect of the neighbors on that property. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, at this time, I've called to order the PZ-18-02 public hearing, a zoning ordinance with text amendments. All the members are still present. All in favor for opening the meeting?
Aye.
No one opposed. So, at this time, I'll read a portion of the public notice. Again, it's application PZ-18-02. The petitioner is the Village of Riverside. Proposed text amendments, including various changes to the village's garage and driveway regulations. Affected sections include, but may not be limited to, Section 841, definitions 844, width encroachments, 1043, bulk requirements, 1045, use and bulk requirements tables, and 1073, accessory structures and uses. Among the potential changes being considered are new or revised definitions, changes related to regulation of driveway aprons and widths, changes to the minimum setback of accessory structures from principal buildings, changes to regulations regarding garage doors, changes to setbacks for attached garages, and possible building coverage bonuses for properties with detached garages. So, this will be entered into the record as an exhibit. Trustee said to me, do you plan on providing testimony? Do you need to be sworn in?
No.
Do you want to swear yourself in as the petitioner?
I'm going to be honest.
Okay.
Okay. Here we are, we're at our public hearing for our text amendment related to garages and driveways. So, after much discussion, we put it out there. So, this is the public hearing on our proposed amendment related to fine-tuning our regulations on how we allow attached front-loaded garages, and what we can do to incentivize perhaps the use of detached garages and minimize the impact of the attached garages and their associated driveways on our national landmark designation. This culminated out of discussion that was had by the Preservation Commission, based on some comments that they received from the National Park Service and the State Historic Preservation Office. So, what we have in our amendment is some amended design guidelines for attached front-loaded garages that would change the setback requirement. Currently, the code allows attached garages to protrude no more than five feet from the main facade of the building. One of your recommendations was to change that so that it actually has to be set back from the main facade of the building. And we chose five feet as that minimum setback that needed to be required. Additionally, we looked at the width of driveways. So, in order to minimize the amount of pavement in the front yard, we decided to just stick with our 10-foot driveway requirement, which we have for detached garages, and apply that to front-loaded garages as well. So, that means any driveway coming up from the street can only be 10 feet wide until a .15, essentially between 25 and 15 feet from the garage, where it can widen up to the full width of the garage, so that you can access each of the parking spaces if it's a two-car garage. We did limit that width, though, so that it's either just six inches on either side of the garage doors, or the edge of the garage, which ever is less, so that they don't all go to the very edges of the garages. Additionally, we put in that taper requirement, so that was that 25-foot number that I was talking about. So, for 15 feet back from the garage face, you can have it that full width, that additional width, but after that point, it has to start tapering down, and it has to get down to 10 feet by that 25-foot mark from the face of the garage, or the front property line, whichever comes first. And that makes that little bit of flexibility for those properties that have the smaller front yards, that can't necessarily get it down to 10 feet within 25 feet. You know, it's just, it makes that more of a possibility to give them room to taper. So, those are kind of our driveway and garage regulations. Additionally, we talked about providing incentives. So, some of the incentives that we, the way we went about it was reducing the required separation between the house and the detached garage, so that it would allow somebody to bring the detached garage closer to the home. Currently, we require a 10-foot separation, so this code would take that away. And now I'm forgetting if we reduced that to a number, or if we just said 10 feet. I apologize, I'm blinking on that one. Three feet. So, we reduced it to three feet, which is what is in the International Residential Building Code. Three feet is kind of that marker whereby you have to start requiring a fire rating if you're closer than three feet to a house. So, in building codes, three feet is typically that separation, and then individual villages decide what is the more appropriate separation for those villages. In our case, we said the separation needed to be 10 feet, so now we're looking to bring it down to that three feet. As part of the village board discussion on this, they said they still wanted to require that fire rating for anything less than that 10-foot mark. So, this does include a change to our building code, so that that same fire rating that would have been required for anything less than three feet, which still really wasn't actually possible because our zoning code said you had to be 10 feet away, would now apply for any garage that's closer than 10 feet. So, that is the, what you see under 4-1-1 in that little table, and some of that wording there. That's all related to that fire resistance rating and the separation requirements. So, that is in there. Additionally, we talked about providing a building coverage bonus. So, what we wrote into it was that if you chose to build a detached garage, if you were building new construction, if you chose a detached garage rather than attached garage, you would exclude the detached garage up to 400 square feet from the building coverage calculation. So, this would allow for them to have a little bit more house then on their lot, because the building, the garage then wouldn't count towards that building coverage, or at least 400 square feet of it wouldn't count towards that building coverage. We did not exclude it from the impervious surface regulations, so they would still have to stay within that either 50% or 45% that we have for our single-family home regulations. So, we still have that restriction on there, but it gives that little bit of additional bonus for, to incentivize somebody to choose to go with the detached garage versus the attached garage. So, those are the main points of the amendments. The Preservation Commission did review this prior to this coming to you. The Preservation Ordinance says that they need to review any proposed zoning code text amendment and provide comments to the village board as to whether the proposed amendment would have a negative effect on the landmark designation of the village or the general plan of Riverside. So, they looked over the amendment and talked about it, and their general feeling was that although this wasn't necessarily bad, they did not feel that it went nearly far enough. So, as the keepers, the protectors of the landmark, they basically said that they felt that this does not go far enough, and in their mind, front-loaded attached garages should be banned in almost every instance, with few exceptions, which could be handled through the variance process based on irregular lot size or shape. And they also stated that they believe detached garages should be encouraged or promoted, and that they would generally not recommend the code be further amended to accommodate or encourage incorporating or adding attached front-loaded garages into or onto existing homes. That part is related to something that we began discussing at the last meeting, but we did not incorporate any change into the text amendment to go out for a public hearing, and that was whether or not we should still keep the existing language that we have in there about attached garages not protruding more than the five feet, and have that applied to existing structures, so that if you wanted to do an addition onto the house, or if you wanted to try to reconfigure things within the existing footprint or within the existing facade of the house, and like, say, take out your living room to incorporate a garage, and then maybe you would do an addition out of the back, I don't know, to make up for the loss of the living room, but to incorporate a garage into the existing footprint of the To get their feedback on that potential change, they said that they would not be in favor of doing anything that would encourage somebody to try and do that. So, that was kind of a non-starter for them. So, something to consider. There wasn't a consensus among all of the commissioners to have a separate regulation for remodels slash additions onto existing homes versus new construction. I think the way that this is written, it would apply to any attached garage. So, if you don't have an attached garage, but somehow you're going to make an attached garage, the way this is written is that it would apply, I think. So, if we do want to, if there is a consensus among the commissioners that they would like to see that differentiation between new construction versus existing additions onto existing homes or remodels on existing homes that incorporate an attached garage, we would need to specifically add that to address that different regulation. I think that about covers it for what we have before us. And the only other thing I can remember kind of being open-ended, that there wasn't a general consensus on, but everybody kind of said, "Well, let's flesh it out a little bit more," was about the building coverage bonus, and whether that should apply to somebody who doesn't have a garage, period, or is maybe considering getting rid of a garage, an attached garage, and then moving to have a detached garage, and whether that bonus could be extended to those instances. So, that's other items that could be up for discussion as to how to handle that, but I think as the initial discussions were going on, the intent behind the bonus had been in relation to somebody doing new construction. So, I will be happy.
Did you get any input from the community?
Yeah.
Questions? Comments?
Well, I have a few. I'd like to say, if I may. On that last point, I do think that we should extend the bonus to people who want to get rid of an existing front-loaded garage and instead put in a detached garage, someone who's remodeling their house to do that. I mean, I think that would be appropriate to incentivize that action. So, in the table, wherever it is, and it's sort of towards the back of the packet, it talks about, "Exception coverage shall not include the area of a detached garage for new residential construction." I think that should be not just for new residential construction, but for remodels, too, that get rid of an existing front-loaded attached garage.
So, you're proposing if they get rid of an attached garage, that they get the bonus?
A front-loaded attached garage, yes. Let's say someone has a house, and they want to make that into their living space, and they're going to maybe have a larger-than house, they're going to build on even more because they're going to put a detached garage in the back. I think they should be incentivized to do that.
I would agree with that. What personally were your thoughts about if they don't have a garage, new construction of a detached garage, getting the bonus? Or anyone else's thoughts on that? If they don't have a garage today?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know about that personally. And I would think if you have a nice house, a decent house, it's existed for some years, you wouldn't want to ruin it by putting a front-loaded attached garage. You'd rather, I would, I don't know if that incentive is necessary. I think people would be more likely to put it in the back of the house, either a rear-loaded garage, you know, make that your addition, and rear, a rear-loaded garage, or else put in a detached garage. So, I'm not sure if that incentive is necessary.
I'm at a loss to think of a lot, maybe they're out there, where someone could convert their front-loading garage into living space and still have enough room for a driveway that would take them to the rear of the property.
I think it's so house-dependent. There's, I would guess, the most probably won't apply to, most of the ranches, but there's probably a few two stories that it might be possible to sneak a driveway along the side. It's so site-specific that I...
I just...
I think the way the Preservation Commission saw that, because we have several architects on the Preservation Commission, I think the way they saw that...
Being a potential was ones that perhaps just have a one-car garage on the side, that was either maybe stuck on at some point, you know, like in the '40s or '50s or something along those lines. Or maybe it was previously a port-cochere that actually did get converted into, you know, a one-car enclosed garage, that they envisioned that that would be a possibility, that that would basically get opened up into a basically port-cochere situation, where you would drive through it to the back of the house, to a garage in the back. And then, the ability then would be maybe to do an addition over the port-cochere, or something along those lines, to maybe make up for additional living space. And that kind of seemed to be the conversation that was happening around that potential. They're like, "I could see somebody doing that," you know, where they might blow out the back of the garage and kind of reconfigure that, so you would drive through the old garage, and it would kind of be open air now, and go to the back with the detached garage, two-car probably detached garage then in the back.
Okay. I can see that. I couldn't envision turning an existing garage into living space.
But yeah, I would say it would be a rare occasion where somebody would have enough room on the side of the house to be able to go past it with a driveway.
Right.
Just so many of our houses are right at that five-foot setback.
I think it's rare, but I can think of a house on the block on Kent that's closest to Harlem, where that was done, where there was an existing garage attached, and they built, there's a garage behind with a driveway, just, and it might not even be permissible at this point. It might not be buildable under our current rules. And then I think there's one on Fairbank as well, where they did a port-cochere-type solution.
But with this coverage bonus, we're trying to incentivize people, to the extent they're going to build a garage, whether it's new construction or a rehab, that to put them in the back. So, I think, I'm struggling to think through a downside of giving this bonus coverage ratio to existing structures. And again, tangentially, part of the discussion was, you know, tear-down versus new construction. I don't know where the line is drawn between rehab versus new construction, but unless any of the other commissioners have a thought on this, I don't see a downside of giving that bonus coverage to both categories.
I don't think there is. I think it puts everybody on an even footing.
I just don't want to incentivize somebody to tear something down completely, as opposed to rehabbing.
Right, and there could be a situation where if you needed one of those sorts of bonus, you would rehab instead of tearing the whole thing down. I think we discussed a little bit at the last meeting whether there should be any bonus also for rear-loading or side-loading garages. I'm not sure about rear-loading garages, if that's something people would be interested in. I'm a little concerned about having a bonus for side-loading garages, because the more I think about it, for a lot of these lots where you do have the front-loading garages, it might encourage people to turn their houses sideways to have, and that's not really necessarily a good look. But, so, I think there was some interest at the Preservation Commission at least, in, you know, why not encourage these side-loading, you know, sawtooth or the rear-loading? Why don't we do something to encourage that?
I think on your end, they, similar to what you're saying, they didn't see a downside to incentivizing anything other than an attached front-loaded garage. So, their preference would be to just say, "We can't have a front-loaded attached garage." But they didn't see there being anything wrong with providing some sort of incentive for people to choose something else. And they understood that in some cases, it's just not practical to, the lot's just not going to be able to fit a side-loaded garage, but maybe a rear-loaded garage would work. And then why not provide that additional bonus for that?
So, they think the rear-loaded garage provides the same design and front green-space benefit as attached garage, because you're just having the driveway that's going to the back, and then you're putting the car there somewhere, either attached to the house or not attached to the house.
I can see incentivizing the rear-loaded, but not the side-loaded.
Just because a side-loaded garage, I can think of at least one on Ballooning Bank, that is toward the front of the house or toward the front of the lot, and so that's what you see driving up the road is a three-car garage. So, I don't know.
And that's a fair point, with the number of kind of curves and bends that we have. There's a lot of opportunity for that vista to see that side-loaded garage versus a rear-loaded or a detached garage in the back. So, that's a fair point.
What else can you think of incentivizing rear-loaded, but not side-loaded garages?
I suppose the side-load, I mean, our goal here is to discourage the front-loading, a side-load would be preferable to the front-load. True? I mean, that's what the goal here is, is to get rid of the, you know, unsightly front-loading garage, the side-load, with those exceptions, would accomplish that.
I suppose from a design perspective, one thing to think about with that is, it's a concern, it's kind of what you see. We could have it so that on a side-loaded garage, you would still be restricted to those nine-foot bays versus being able to have the two-car one, because there is more potential for it to be visible from the street. So, that kind of cuts down a little bit on some of the...
Is the one you're speaking of, a side-loading garage, it looks like a front-load, depending on where you're standing on the street? No?
No. It's a truly side-loaded garage. And I think, you know, your point is, we'll take it, Sonia, is that our, the way our streets are, front-loaded, side-loaded, you're still gonna probably see the garage. And if our goal is to not be able to see the garage, then it seems to me we wouldn't want to incentivize side-loaded, because that also puts more pavement kind of toward the front and in the more visible area of the house. Whereas a rear-loaded, you're just, you have the ribbon of driveway, just like you would with a detached.
That's true. Because when you have the side-loaded, you still need that extra room to be able to back out of the driveway. So, that is going to push that house, you know, 18 to 20 feet off of that side property line, to be able to provide for that movement, for you to back out of the garage and then pull out down.
With a big pad of concrete.
So, that is a fairly large pad of concrete on the side of the house.
Escaping or something.
I can see that. Yeah.
Well, that's another thing that I, you know, there's lots of detail... Well, that's another thing that I, you know, there's lots of details. And then the side, some of the side-loaded garages that I can think of that are very attractive are because of landscaping. So one thing you could do is, or the board could do is to require some screening of the larger pads if you're going to do that with a side-loaded garage. Then I think there's a couple different kinds of side-loading garages. You could have, you know, a box of a house, and actually one side of the house is the side-loaded garage, the sawtooth or whatever. Or you can have a side-loaded garage that's protruding or a sort of almost a separate building. So there's, I think there are different aspects of this.
My thought is that we provided a nice incentive for the detached garage and the rear-loading garages. There's a lot of variation on side-loading garages. You know, I agree with Commissioner Pelletier that those side-loaded could create the same potential issues that we're looking to address with the front-loading. So my thought would be just keep the bonus to the rear-loading and the detached garage.
There is a concern though, I'd also say, the rear-loading, as far as I think at one of the board meetings, some of the trustees were commenting about sustainability and we know our flooding problems. And I suppose if you're a side-loaded garage, you're going to stop the pavement there. Whereas if you have a rear-loaded garage, you have to get the car on, and then you'll have that pad in the back, and that's going to be your impervious surface in the back. So that's another issue. So I think...
The issue there is that, like, all, the various goals are conflicting for all of this.
Yeah, right, exactly.
You know, so it's just a matter of, like, what's the least of the evils or what's our primary goal for all of this?
But we still do have the impervious max.
Yeah.
That has to be adhered to regardless of the bonus.
And side-grading requirements.
We have side-grading.
So regardless, you know, they have to address the drainage of the lot. So I feel like we're addressing those by our other, other ordinances, requirements.
Commissioner Skamen, what do you think about bonuses for side?
I'm on the fence about side-loaded garages. I think if, if, on the one hand, I think there are many fewer lots in town that will support a side-loaded garage. So how many lots are we really talking about? You need at least seventy-five feet, if not a hundred feet, to really get the good spin into the garage. So therefore, how many lots really are we talking about? And then the flip side is, is that I worry that if given the choice of a detached garage for these properties, or losing the bonus and just going front-loading, that they're going to pick front-loading. And the side, a side-load is, is a more desirable option than the front-load. I'm on board with what you're saying, Commissioner Pelletier, about the additional concrete. Definitely on board with that. However, the side-load does have the advantage that you don't have the big, like, maw of garage doors in front facing the street at all angles, not just potentially the side angles if you're coming. So therefore, I'm on the fence. Back to my first point.
Commissioner Mendoza?
I say make it a hard decision. Either you want the bonus, you put it in the back, or you're going to get a front-load garage. But no bonus for side-load. I mean, what we want to do is incentivize to put them in the back, right? So there's your bonus.
I think having a hard line is much easier for everyone to interpret because there is no interpretation. I'd leave the bonus for rear, for in the back and not for side.
One could say the hard line is not in front, but I take the point.
That would be harder.
I understand, I'll jump into that full force. I understand the Preservation Commission's thoughts on that. I think our, the way our current culture is, is we can't, we can't go that far. And I think we had that discussion a while ago that we weren't going to.
That's not what I meant, but...
No, I'm, I don't mean to interpret your thoughts.
Okay. So you have the bonuses that we seem to be in favor of with clarity?
So we will maybe change that.
Can I take a crack at it? Sonya?
Go ahead.
Coverage shall not include the area of detached garage for, one, new residential construction, or, two, construction where an existing structure is being remodeled and attached garage is being removed and a rear-loading detached garage is being added. Is that a cover?
Didn't we want to include also homes where a new garage is being constructed that is detached?
Or rear.
Or rear.
A new?
In other words, if, if, if the lot does not currently have a garage, so they're putting a new garage on or in.
Okay, so those cases where an existing house has no garage of any form.
Correct.
Giving them the bonus if they choose to do a detached or rear-loaded attached garage.
Correct.
Okay.
So existing structure is being remodeled and attached garage is being removed or the structure, or the property currently has no garage, and a rear-loading detached garage is being added?
But we also talked about, as I said, removal of the garage, but conversion into living space. I mean, I don't, I don't understand why we're getting hung up on they have to remove something in order to...
Being eliminated? Does that work better?
Yeah, it's not necessarily being...
Right, we're not cutting it off.
Demolished, it's just being transformed.
So removed is strong, I understand. So let's...
Where an existing attached garage is being eliminated, does that convert it?
Convert it for purpose.
Removed or converted?
Lawyers?
Don't produce for cars, though.
There, there is a current provision in the code, it's ten seven three A, eight A one, which refers, which I don't know if we'll still need or if it's something to for you to build on. It says, "All residential garages for attached garages, utilization of a side-loaded or rear-loaded garage is encouraged to minimize the impact of the garage doors on the street's gate." So you will probably want to address that. Either, it's not simply encouraged, but, you know, it's recognizing this code, we're incentivizing it.
Okay.
Something. I just don't know if it should still be there.
Rather than just saying...
Right now, because it's going to be an outlier, kind of.
That was ten seven three...
Yeah, ten seven three A, accessory structures, and then eight residential garage design requirements. And then A, all residential garages, and one for attached garages.
Staying there, we have two. Do we want to allow eighteen-foot wide doors for side-loaded garages, newly-built ones?
Right here.
So right below it, so.
So side-loaded garages should also be limited to eight-foot doors or nine-foot, nine-foot doors, yeah, sorry.
I'm asking opinions?
That's my opinion.
Yes. So I have a majority, none of your heads are saying yes.
Okay.
Got it, yes.
Back to Commissioner Miller, do you want to continue your list?
Oh, okay, sure. If you go down to the next couple of paragraphs right under there, which makes it easy. It's front-loaded residential garage design requirements. I'm not sure if B1 is beneficial at all. I don't even know if it helps. I mean, if it really makes front-loaded garages any more attractive. It says, "Upper-level dormers and pitched roof elements are encouraged to de-emphasize the front-loading garage." I don't think that's even true. And then if you go down to five, it talks about how, you know, you should make garage openings, window columns, trim, decorative paneling should de-emphasize the visual impact of the garage. So I don't know if one is...
Can I have the two?
Yeah, you could, or, I don't know. I mean, there are a lot of, some of the nicer front-loaded garages that exist don't really, you wouldn't want to put an upper-level dormer on it because it's more of a modern house. So I don't know. I just think that's messing up...
And those are all should, you know, they're not requirements.
But it is not a requirement, it's just encouraged, so I don't know that it hurts anything.
And you gave us some paperwork, design side paperwork, a while ago that suggested that.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people put that in there. That's a fairly common practice. And I think the idea is, especially with additions, putting on attached garages, you know, for a while there in like the eighties and nineties and things like that, you had people that would just put these flat-roofed garage additions onto the house. And so the idea was to try to make it look more like the house incorporated more. And it also allows you then to kind of de-emphasize it a little bit by doing those kind of things. It, the focus then can be on the massing perhaps of the roof or the structure as a whole as opposed to zooming in on the garage face itself, is I think the idea of some of those design guidelines, so.
Well, then the next thing I get is the next trigger, something that can... This is the facade requirement. "Front-loaded garages shall not occupy more than fifty percent of the width of the front facade of the house as measured along any building line that faces the street." So as I said in an earlier meeting, I still think it should be less than fifty percent of the facade, but no one else agreed with me on that, I think. But when it says, "Front facade as measured along any building line," I'm not sure what any building line means. And I don't think it's defined in the code, and I don't think front facade is defined in the code. So is the building line at grade? Is it, you know, ten feet up? Is it, does it include the eaves? I think that should be defined in some way, strictly because that fifty percent really does, I think it's a critical number. Because if you go over fifty percent, it looks really bad. And if you go under, it looks better.
Where's your confusion with that sentence, Sonya?
It says, "As measured along any building line that faces the street." So we had a recent house. I'm not sure where it was measured. I don't know if it was measured at the ground level or if it's measured higher up. So what is a building, any building line? What does that mean? And what are the parameters? Is it the exterior?
So you're saying where do you measure the width?
Yeah, right. What does any building line?
I think typically it's being measured at the base of the building. I think that's fairly typical in, in common parlance, building terms. Building line is typically the line where the house is built to.
Right.
So you have your setback line. A lot of times that is your building line, but sometimes a house is, you know, somebody doesn't choose to build to what their setback line is. So the building line is typically that built-to line of a house. So you may have, and it, it technically means any built-to line. So from the rear, the rear of the house, the side of the house, the front of the house. Those are your building lines. So your house, you may have a five-foot setback, but your house is actually, you know, six-point-one-three. It's built at six-point-one-three from your property line. So that build line is then established at that six, that they call that the build line. If you have a twenty-five-foot required setback, I know our community is a little bit different, but in, in general kind of building terms, if you're not supposed to build a house any closer than twenty-five feet to the front property line, sometimes, you know, just for whatever reason, you know, a new subdivision's going up, they want to stagger things or whatever. One house may be built right at twenty-five, but another house might be built at thirty feet. And that, their building line then is that thirty-foot line, not the setback line.
So you're saying the building line is, is the ground, is the ground, has nothing to do with the house per se?
It's established, it's, it's established by that where the house is at on the property.
So then maybe front facade should be defined. Again, does that include the front facade with any encroachments? Does it not include encroachments? Is it the walls of the house? What, what is the front facade? I'm just thinking maybe to avoid any confusion, there should be some greater clarity with what that means.
So you're saying encroachments at the either end of the house?
Right. Would it include like a chimney that's up in the front of the house on the corner? Does it include eaves? Does it include, I don't know, downspouts? Does any decorative corners?
I don't think it would include, I don't think it would include... I don't think it would include downspouts or, I wouldn't say it would really include chimneys either per se, although, you know, like I think about, you know, some of, is it the one Zook House over on Kent that kind of has like a big brick kind of chimney thing that even kind of like extends out from the front of the house? And like, would you, and it's, it's a little, would you include that in the overall width of the facade of, I know, I would almost kind of include that in the facade of the house in that instance, but, you know, a little dinky sided chimney on the side of the house, I don't know that I would necessarily include that as part of the facade width.
So do you think it's possible to add more clarity here, or are you saying there's just too many variables to add something in addition to what's here?
I think there can be a little bit of nuance, because people will do things like, I'm just thinking of, especially with higher, more higher-end homes that are being built, that they'll do things like wing walls. And do we include the wing walls then in the overall, you know, the overall facade? If we start getting really detailed in our definition, then there's going to start being questions, well, would this be included? Or, you know, well, you included this, why wouldn't you include this? And...
Do we want to use part of the language in number three, which says, which excludes any architectural elements and just leave it at that?
So we're basically just looking at foundation, kind of?
Right, corner to corner, right?
Corner to corner, so to speak.
I wouldn't go much further in that and just leave any further, just going down the whole.
We could do that.
So have that exclusion applied to the width of the facade as well?
Yes.
Uh huh.
I lost my fifty percent requirement.
I had something in that particular area. So under eight B, when Commissioner Miller talked about the upper-level dormers, I wondered whether we should be adding that requirement, although I don't know if you were, they were, add that requirement to side-loaded garages as well. Is that applicable for side-loaded garages? To again, de-emphasize the fact that it's a garage by adding, you know, some kind of pitched roof, or does that not really fit because it's on the side of the house?
There is a provision, if you go two more pages, where it talks about side-loaded garage.
Right, where you have the arrow, right.
But it doesn't talk, it doesn't...
Yeah, it doesn't talk about the dormers and roofline on that one as well.
It's part of the...
It's eight C, item two, does say, "Windows, doors, roof treatments should incorporate architectural details expressed by residents." That should be sufficient to get the points that they were looking for in terms of...
Yeah, I think it does.
But I took C two to be similar to B four, or B, yeah, B four, where it talked about windows and other trim. And the piece that I felt didn't match between front-loaded and side-loaded in the documentation here was B one. It might not be worthy adding, it might not, you know, with upper-level dormers and such, but I felt that there was a slight inconsistency between what we were requiring for front-loaded versus side-loaded.
The side-loaded does mention roof treatments, it's just not emphasized as much as say upper-level dormers.
And I don't know how much somebody next to a side-loaded garage wants more dormers facing them. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
But again, to your point earlier, it's not, you know, it's not a requirement, it's encouraged.
Right. And I think the point is to make these buildings attractive, but there's all, there's a lot of personal choice involved in this. In that, in that same... In that, in that same section about side-loaded garage, the subparagraph two, where it talks about windows, doors, roof treatments, I thought if we're revising this, it might be nice to say of the side of the garage facing the street, or the garage wall facing the street, rather than of the garage facing the street. But I doubt anyone's misunderstanding it as it is.
So garage wall?
Yeah, garage wall facing the street.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good one.
And then if you go further down the page, E. driveway is the very last paragraph, I think you've discussed this before, Sonia. This is the turnaround thing? And I, I don't understand now why it's needed if we have the provision on the wider area allowed right outside of garages. It's not called an apron, but, so I just don't know if this is needed, or if it's repetitive or confusing, and...
So, I think typically when you see that turnaround area that they're talking about, it's almost like a little...
Like a bump out?
Like a little bump out, so it kind of allows them to back out, and then turns, they can pull forward out of the driveway towards the street versus backing up the 100 feet the whole way back. So that's a way to allow that movement to happen, because if it can only be the width of the garage, it makes it a little bit more difficult to make that an option without allowing, making that allowance for that turnaround. And some people use it, and some people don't. I mean, there are people that add that on because they need, they need that, and then there's a lot of houses that just, you know, it's, it's just as wide as the garage is, and then it starts to taper down, and they all kind of, they figure it out, so. Suppose those of us that didn't grow up with a detached garage maybe had to build that little thing on the side, so we could figure out how to get out of our driveways.
Back to the 50%, I can't remember from the other communities that you sampled, were most of them allowing garages, front-loaded garages, to take up to 50%?
I think that was fairly typical, or they put a max on there, and it was typically a number that would get you a two-car garage. So, that's what I seem to recall, is like some communities, like Wheaton and stuff like that, it was like 50%, but in no case wider than 24 feet, or, you know, something along those lines. So it was really trying to make sure you weren't getting a three-car garage in the front, for the front-loaded garages, so. I don't ever seen anything that was less than 50%. It was either 50%, or they had that kind of, the garage shall not be wider than 24 feet, or 22 feet, or, in some communities that were okay with three-car garages, no wider than 30 feet, so. I want to say that might have been, the Naperville one, was that they had a no wider than 30 feet.
One of the garage design things that you sent us, I don't believe is from the Chicago suburbs, but they limited it to 40%. But I don't know where S-D-A-R-B is. If any memory where that came from.
No.
How do the rest of you feel about keeping it at 50?
I'm in favor of it.
I'm getting majority nods.
Commissioner Miller, have we covered all of your... Oh, no, no, the only other thing I had, I think Sonia kind of also just answered, because last in the meeting, we agreed that for attached front-loaded garages, they could have an extra six inches of pavement on either side of their door, but then I noticed that wasn't also allowed for detached garages. But maybe that's because of this turnaround bump out provision.
Right, I think the, we kept the, for detached garages, the way that it is, and they're allowed to be as wide as the garage is.
So, yeah, the walls of the garage, basically. So I don't think there's a need to make them consistent, then, if we have, still have this provision that would allow an extra space for turnaround.
Commissioner Scanlon, do you have comments?
I just have one comment. On page two, under 8.4.4, right at the end of A, we talk about, "In no case shall the apron exceed the width of the driveway, blah, blah." Is it necessary to specifically state, "In no case shall the apron excluding the flare exceed the width of the driveway," or is it just assumed that it would be excluding the flare?
I think it's kind of assumed that it would be excluding the flare.
All right, that was definitely, other than what we were talking about, that was maybe a good...
Commissioner Mendoza?
Nothing further, I was just looking for the old references to 50% in other communities, but I can't find it right now.
Okay. We can come back. Commissioner, both of you?
Just actually with regard to the upper-level dormers and pitched roof elements, would it be better to change that to something like matching the architectural style of the main house, or, you know, we use that type of language elsewhere? I think there's, there's at least one other reference to that. It just seems like, again, you know, we do have a lot of mid-century modern homes that it would be appropriate to have, it would be actually inappropriate to have dormers or a pitched roof. So, it just seems like what we're trying to get at is we want the garage to match the architectural style of the main house.
The way new construction detached garages should match the main house?
Yes, right.
We had language with regard to garage sidewalls, I remember, where we would allow them to be higher than normal if they incorporated the general architectural nature of the house. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, I think it is. And in fact, I think it's, they, there's a little higher height allowed if it is in order for the pitch of the roof to match.
Right. So there is some language like that somewhere in the...
Yes.
So are you suggesting replacing B1 with something else, or adding to B1?
Replacing B1 with something else.
So, right now, for detached accessory buildings, garages, says, "For a detached garage, not to exceed 18 feet in height as measured to the peak of the roof, may be permitted to enable the roof pitch of the garage to match the roof pitch of an existing home. The maximum height of the sidewall shall not exceed 12 feet in height, as measured in accordance with our sidewall height definition that we created." And I believe there is another one that says, I don't know if I have that in here, but I believe there's, I'm not seeing it, that any new garage should match.
Page five, D1.
D1, is that what you said?
On page five?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, too. Consistency of design includes use of the same roof pitch, trim, colors, etc.
There we go.
Scanlon, the word element, my template.
So you say move that language into the attached?
Um, yes.
Okay.
And side.
For side-loaded garages, yep. Okay.
Other comments?
No. So add that to side-loaded and incorporate that into the front-loaded ones as well? Or for front-loaded, you still wanted it to say dormers?
No, I would say matching the architectural style of the house, and maybe leave the language to de-emphasize the garage.
Yeah, if we could leave the existing sentence after the new addition and say, "Upper-level dormers and pitched roof elements where architecturally appropriate are encouraged to de-emphasize the garage," does that work? Or do you just want to get rid of it altogether? I mean, it's all just encouraging anyway.
Right, it is, it is. And if it's architecturally appropriate, then, you know, we want to encourage it, but if it's not, then we don't, I guess, is my...
It just seems like the last part of D1 really covers what Commissioner Pelletier was trying to get at, as opposed to keeping anything from B1. Is that what you're thinking, Commissioner?
Yeah, just with, as long as it includes the de-emphasizing, which I...
So strike that.
Oh, right, including the last part of that sentence, you're saying, yeah.
Right, which is the purpose of this requirement, is to de-emphasize the garage.
And then same thing for side-loaded garages.
Commissioner Muggs? Commissioner Henn?
I think we've captured, huh?
I think I have one remaining one. Two. On page six. The very first sentence. First part of it, just, all I wrote is awkward, and I'm not sure how to improve it, but I don't know if anybody else kind of read it a few times. It seems a bit weird.
Page six, first sentence, paragraph B.
The very first line.
"In order to allow access to any additional spaces within a garage, the portion of the driveway approaching the garage is permitted to widen to the width of the garage. However, the increased width is only permitted to extend for a distance of 20 feet back from the garage doors before tapering to the required driveway width of 10 feet."
Yes, this should have been a semi-colon, or a new sentence?
I think it's the first clause, "In order to access, allow access to any additional spaces within a garage," do you mean with the service door?
No, I think we're trying to say, you know, because a 10-foot driveway is only going to serve one space, so if you need to get to any other spaces that are in there, say, if it's a two-car garage, to access that additional space, you get to widen the driveway beyond the 10 feet. That's how I think we're trying to get around, calling it an apron.
Right, so if it's a one-car garage, the 10 feet just goes right up to if it's a garage.
Wasn't there some provision for the front-loaded attached garages, or maybe something else where the driveway serving it would be to the walls of the garage? Could you just say the same thing, rather than, "In order to provide access to additional spaces"?
Well, I think the idea was, is that we didn't, well, I mean, I suppose we still have a six-inch in there, but if somebody has an extra-wide garage...
Oh, like a 30-foot wide detached garage, 40-foot or something?
You know, somebody who has, you know, a few extra feet on the side that's a storage area in their garage, do you want them to be able to just go within the garage? So the door may end, but there might be another three feet of quote-unquote garage.
So you could say slices of the doors.
To any garage door.
Yeah, we don't even have to give a purpose, right? The "in order to allow" is unnecessary.
Take the spots out.
Yeah.
And then the very last paragraph of that page. "Is permitted to widen to six inches beyond the garage door," and then should it be, "or to the edge of the garage's exterior walls," adding the letter, the word "to"? Or not having the word "to"?
I think "to" is good.
I think that's what was intended.
Mm-hmm.
Two, okay.
Did you want to strike that later in that sentence, to allow access to each garage parking space? Since we took it out.
Sure.
You okay with that, Sonia?
So, can we go back to B, then, since we struck that clause?
The one on the top?
The one on top, and we struck that clause. Okay, so now you're allowed to widen, the driveway's allowed to be permitted to widen to the width of the garage. Do we then need the entire sentence following the red line? It starts, "If the garage contains an entry door or extended wall..."
I thought in B we were going to change it, instead of the width of the garage, we were going to say "to," six inches outside of the garage doors.
Is that true or not?
Six inches beyond the garage doors. Oh, I'm sorry, so in the top, we were going to say the same thing.
So what we have for attached garages, do for the detached garage?
No, I see what you mean.
No, is this, is this sentence now unnecessary?
It is unnecessary.
Is that redundant?
Because a detached garage in the back might have a service door, therefore, by allowing the driveway width to be the full width of the garage, including all garage doors and service doors, which is what changed to the beginning sentence.
Right, and this becomes unnecessary.
Oh, okay.
So is the, is the driveway allowed to cover the service door? Or is the area served by the service door more of a sidewalk and not the driveway? So your driveway goes the edge of the garage doors, and then you can have a little sidewalk that goes over to the service door?
It doesn't matter, because we make you...
Well, it does matter somewhat, but after many feet, maybe, you know, you don't really need, I don't, I mean, people are going to have impervious surface path anyway for basketball hoops, or whatever.
I think most people just extend the driveway to full width and don't create a separate sidewalk. It's just one massive kind of...
But then we have more impervious, we're allowing, without thought, more impervious surface to just extend out from the garage.
The way this is written, it always allows, right?
Yeah, it always said widen to the width of the garage, so. Didn't say the width of the garage door.
So thank you for getting preservation's draft minutes to us, appreciate it. I think we should just very briefly address what their recommendation was, is to make front-loaded garages variation. We have discussed this before, and we're not in favor of that, because if we did do that, we would get so many of them, or a certain number of them would be, once we get a certain number of variation requests for the same thing, then we know we need to text them. Any thoughts, comments on that?
Ma'am? I think we are on the right track, that our changes in the village landmark information encompass the whole village. And when you look at the more modern homes that were built in, say, the 30s, many of them do have attached garages. them do have attached garages. They are part of the fabric of the village. One difference is that typically the older homes, the attached garage tends to be a little bit more subdued. It looks a little bit, it's a little bit less of a facade. It has that de-emphasized effect. A lot of those were also built when single car was all family hand. So I think while our changes don't roll us back to only allowing garages in the back, I think it does help and get us closer to where we want to be.
Other comments on their recommendation?
I agree with Commissioner Marhol on his observation of a number of historic houses in this village that have front-loading attached garages. And I can envision the circumstances under which I would support an all-out ban of front-loading garages.
Thanks.
Well, I would like to say, I'll take, before we close this, I would just like to say, when the Village Board is considering this, I think some of the Preservation Commission's concerns are relevant and could be considered and perhaps could be addressed in different ways, such as perhaps banning front-loading garages in certain districts, like the R-1A-A or R-1A district, but not for the contributing buildings, perhaps, or in certain historic areas, like not all of Scotlandwood, but perhaps not in the surrounding areas, which are just R-1A. Another thing that the Board could consider, I think, is imposing some kind of a, a pervious surface requirement in a front yard, a percentage of the yard or a width. For instance, if you have a 50-foot wide lot, perhaps you can only have, you have to have 35 feet of green space in the front. That would allow for a sidewalk and a 10-foot wide driveway, or you could require a certain landscaping. Because I think the Preservation Commission's concern largely was not having enough green space in front, having too much pavement in front, including the smaller lots, and to some extent having then people parking their cars on that area, which ruins the appearance of the village, where people are always parking their cars up there. So I think there are a few of the things that the Board could consider to kind of deal with the visual effect of pavement and less green space.
Should be the Village Board considering that or we're considering that? It could be part of our proposal.
We could discuss it, but people have already, other Commissioners have already said they don't approve of the idea of banning front-loading garages in any part of the village, so I don't think that's going to go anywhere. But we could discuss.
But some of their other proposals, like limiting the amount of impervious surfaces in the front yard or something.
Well, I think we've had, I mean, over the past few months, I think we've had those discussions on several occasions, and there hasn't been a consensus on going in that direction. You know, we went with the taper, we went with the 10-foot. I mean, I know Commissioner Miller has brought up several times doing those kind of things for, for limiting the front yard or requiring, just requiring pavers. If you're going to do an attached front-loaded garage, then you have to do a paver driveway or requiring the screening and things like that. So I think as a Commission, it's been discussed, but it's never seemed to have gained enough traction to make it into the draft text amendment. So I think as part of your discussion, that is there for them to reference if they want to go a different direction. But I think the Commission in general, I mean, unless we want to start engaging again, I think those, you know, those ideas, and again, like restricting it by district, I think we've gone, you know, we've discussed that a couple of times as well as we've been going through this process. And there, you know, wasn't enough Commissioners that were interested in saying, "Only in the R-1A district or only in the R-1A district could you or could you not have this specific type of garage." So, so I think that was bantered about, maybe you would allow a three-car garage in an R-1A district, but you wouldn't allow it in the R-1A district. My pushback on that is like, in the most part, you would never be able to have a three-car front-loaded garage in the R-1A district because it's a rare occasion that you have a house, a lot that's even wide enough to fit that. I mean, maybe there's a couple that are still 100-foot wide lots, you know, in, in some random places in, you know, the Second Division or, you know, maybe up on Addison. But for the most part, it's all 50, maybe 55 or 60-foot wide lots, if maybe they kind of divvied up one lot and a little bit went over here and a little bit went over there. But for the, for the most part in the R-1A district, you're not seeing lots that are more than 60 feet wide for certain. The only, only ones I can think of are some of the ones along Riverside Road, because Riverside Road is all R-1A, because everything in the Second Division is R-1A. But, you know, there's a few of those along there that do have the wider, wider fringes, so. So it kind of self-selects at that point. So what's really the need of putting it in there when it kind of self-selects at that And that was kind of the, what I remember the discussion being is, is you guys were kind of working through some of those issues, so.
Okay, do you hear a motion to close or continue the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. So now do I have a motion for a recommendation to the Board? You're looking at B. Do you want me to spell it out? Or let the person making the motion to make the motion. Don't we need a motion?
No. Yes, we need a motion to make a recommendation, or you can just open it up to have discussion. We don't have to start with a motion to have the discussion on the, further discussion on the text amendment, so. You can just ask if there's any further discussion on the text amendment or if somebody's ready to make a motion related to the text.
Motion's first. Want to discuss more?
I'll make a motion that a recommendation be made to the Board to accept the proposed changes as amended and proposed tonight.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All right, you have in your packet the standards. You don't have to meet all of them. So they're on page three of the memo. So the first one is, "The extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general, general welfare of the village." Not much comment on that one.
No, I think that's my...
Yep. "The relative gain to the public is compared to the hardship imposed upon the applicant," which again is the Village of Riverside.
I think, as I know, the Ford world working towards protecting our historic designation.
"The consistency of the amendment with village plans," what Joel just said.
Yep.
"Consistency of the amendment with the intent and general regulations of the zoning ordinance," not really applicable. "Whether it corrects an error or omission, adds clarification, or reflects a change in policy."
Yes, I think it accurately reflects a change in policy.
"That will benefit the residents of the village as a whole and not just the applicant."
Yes.
Yep.
"Whether it provides a more workable way to achieve the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance and village plans."
Yes.
"The extent to which the proposed amendment creates non-conformities." So existing five-foot forward front-loading garages would become legal non-conforming, correct?
Correct, yes.
Is that fine?
So in the event those houses were to be replaced at some point, they would have to be non-conforming?
And finally, "The extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the overall structure and organization of the zoning ordinance."
Yep.
All right. Any further thoughts? Prepare to vote. We call the roll, please.
All right. Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Philatier?
Yes.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Marhol?
Yes.
Chairperson Mateo?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Thanks, everybody. It's been a lot of work.
Getting into the homestretch.
We didn't, never received anything in writing from the National Park Service about this, correct? If they have concerns?
No.
So do you think the Preservation will prepare their own proposal for?
No, they were just, no, I think they were just, their, their ordinance requires them to review and provide comments to the Village Board on their perceived impact on the national landmark designation and the general plan. So that's what the, their minutes will reflect, that they reflect, and then, you know, similar to what I put in your staff report outlining their motion that they made, that will be provided to the Board as well. So they'll have access to those minutes and that motion for them to take into consideration as they look at your changes that you had with your recommendation and then their, and their concerns, so. So, but I think they were overly interested in taking a crack at rewriting things. I think they just wanted to make sure that they were clear in their comments on what their concerns were and kind of sticking to their, "Nobody's going to stick up for us, we need to stick up for ourselves," kind of, you know? So let's just put it all out there and make sure everybody kind of understands where we're coming from. So hopefully the minutes reflect that, so.
We have one item under Old Business to continue discussion, continued discussion and recommendations relating to stoops and porches.
Okay, so at the last meeting, you asked, oh, the last meeting or maybe it was the meeting before that, but you asked the staff to try to put together a kind of all-encompassing entryway allowance so that every house would be able to have an entryway up to a certain size that would be allowed to encroach into the street yard in some way. So covered or uncovered, kind of working in that. So in kind of looking at some of the communities that we reviewed and talking to a couple of architects, if, are there any sort of specific word triggers that I should be using or anything like that to put in here? We came up with the open and/or covered entryways, stoops, landings, and other similar structures serving an entry not exceeding 25 square feet in area. And 25 square feet is the one, is the kind of maximum size that you kind of came to a general consensus on. And that would allow them to figure out how they want to configure it, you know, if they want it to be four by six, or if they want it to be five by five, you know, whatever kind of works for them for that house that they would be able to have up to that size, and it would be allowed to encroach into the street yard as needed, within that size range. I did not include porches in that, so we still have our porch thing kind of separate from that. But so any sort of, to ungracefully put it, you know, cajiggered, covered front entryway à la what we saw on Gage where it was more of a roof extension that was being put out there from what was already a porch with a, you know, its own roof over there to be able to provide that covered entry into the home. This kind of makes that allowance. We don't have to call it a porch. It's, you know, it's covered, so we can say that, you know, the roof extension is the covering that's, that's there, and so they can, they can do it not to exceed the 25 square feet in area, and it would be allowed to encroach into the front yard. And then I kept the restrictions the same on the side yard as we currently have for, that we previously had for stoops, was that no more than three feet into the required side yard, so. And then the encroachment would be allowed in the rear yard. That shouldn't really be an issue because in most cases, houses aren't right at the rear yard setback, so. That's, was our attempt at trying to write that in. If you feel need some finessing or I wasn't quite capturing what you were looking for, let me know and we can kind of try and work with it. And then Attorney Mars and I will continue to work on fleshing out those definitions for audience canopies to reflect some of those changes or clarifications that we wanted in those definitions and bring back any changes you want to this language in the encroachment table.
I think as it's written, this looks very good, but I had some questions.
Okay.
Which is, in the furthest left-hand column, it says, "Open and/or covered entryways, stoops, landings, and other similar structures serving an entry not exceeding 25 square feet in area." So it's, it's the structure that does not exceed 25 square feet in area. Does that, that, is that saying that someone can only build something that's 25 square feet, or the encroaching portion can only encroach by a square footage of 25 feet? Because then that would, I think, prevent people from building something bigger if they want, but only a portion of it is actually encroaching into the street yard or the other areas.
I think this is meant to limit the encroachment.
Okay.
So we didn't necessarily want something, because like the idea was, we didn't necessarily want a stoop that was the whole width of the house to be able to encroach into the street yard.
Right. So I don't know if that needs to be clarified a little bit, because it's not limiting that people can only build a 25-square-foot landing, but if they can build something bigger, it's only that it can only encroach that much.
If it encroaches, then that size is limited.
And then I think in the first, in the street yard, it should also, I think, should also, cannot encroach more than three feet, just like for the side yard.
In the front?
For the front yard, yes. Because for your side yard, it says, "Yes, provided they extend no more than three feet into the required yard." So I think that, I would think it should be the same in the front yard. Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
So previously, stoops were allowed to encroach no more than four feet into the required street yard. So do we want to keep it at the four feet that a stoop was allowed to encroach before? Or are we just, I, I kind of thought that we just wanted to kind of allow people to kind of figure out what they needed to do to make their entry work. We just were only going to let it go so far.
I don't know that's what the question is.
And then, so 25 square feet basically meant somebody was probably not going to be coming out more than like maybe five or six feet, kind of depending on, on how it, it works for that entry.
Good summary of the lecture.
So why have the limitation for the side yard if not more than three feet?
Well, because side yards are only five feet wide, so main side yards are a very narrow thing, so.
So you don't want someone building up to the...
Right up to the lot line.
All right, I guess I'm excited.
Yeah.
Back to that first column, that Commissioner Miller referenced, the open and/or covered entryways, et cetera. I think it needs a comma between entry and not, because I think the way it's written implies that the entry doesn't exceed 25 square feet, but I think you're talking about, I don't think that's...
Right, I think maybe we should flip the exceeding 25 square feet in the serving an entry portion.
Okay, thanks.
Another comment I have is, it makes it, this makes it sound like, and maybe this is what everyone wants, so you could have an encroaching front entry, you could have an encroaching side entry, maybe two, you could have an encroaching rear entry, so you could have four entries. And I had thought we were only thinking about having one entry where this would be allowed in the house, either on your side yard or your front yard.
So only encroachment per property?
Yeah, that's what I thought would be best. So you have a side entry and a front entry, even on a small lot. So I don't know what people think about that.
I mean, if you have a side door, regardless if it's closer to the front of the house or closer to the back of a house, I'm just kind of thinking of just kind of how some different houses are laid out, you have to have a landing by building code. different houses are laid out, you have to have a landing by building code. So if it happens to be on the side of the house, and your house is only five feet off of the property line.
But then you could have a landing that simply meets the bare minimum requirements of.
Just that three by three.
Yeah, or whatever is required for, whatever the building code requires.
Gotcha.
Whereas this was an additional bonus, or the.
Of more than that.
For the people of a more expansive entryway.
Gotcha. So it's maybe something we.
So maybe you'd have to go back and allow additional stoop or something like that, or landing for the side.
I didn't hear all that, I think.
So if you, if you still, if you say if you have a side door that comes off the side of your house, you still have to have a landing to serve that. So maybe you'd have to add additional language into here, allowing that, but at the bare minimum of the building code, the old stoop language that I think was in the code. Or whatever is required by building code to serve that.
If it is encroaching.
Yeah, right, yes, I agree.
Okay.
Does that sound too confusing?
Well, it says here, to meet the minimum requirements of the building code, so it seems like it's in there already.
But you could have the 25-square-foot landing in the front of your house, and you could have another 25-square-foot landing on the side of your house.
Is your concern more towards the principal entryway versus secondary entryway?
Yes, right. And that now, all of a sudden, people don't have like, three main entryways in their house, and all, you have all these encroachments into the side yards.
Yeah, so I think that the differentiation, you're looking for principal entryways, what this would apply to.
Right.
However, the best way to define that.
So this part should only apply to principal entries?
That might be simplest.
Define principal.
Yeah, you're going to define principal, then.
Because some people may have a front door, but everybody uses the side door, so they might say, I only come in the side door because I parked my garage in the back, and so that's my principal entrance, but it's not what presents to the street as the principal entrance.
Or you're going to, a single entry, you can approach on a single entry.
See, any resident is allowed to have one open and/or covered entryway, blah, 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 that's 25 square feet, and encroaches.
Okay. That one might require a little bit more, that might be a new letter, like along with porch, you know, like in that section, as opposed to just handling it in.
In the table.
In the table itself, if we're going to get into that level of differentiation.
Like I said, I just wouldn't want to have a house, and all of a sudden, it's grown, you know, two entries on the side that are large and substantial, and then it's got a front one, and.
But it can't encroach more than three feet, so I think it's.
Right, but it could still be around the whole, and it could still be an encroachment. So, I mean, because our side yards are fairly small, and if you add in driveways and all the rest, if someone is having two substantial encroachments on the side, I think right now, though, perhaps, if I'm right, the widest encroachment you can have is 18 inches for chimney into the side yard. So this would double that, and on each side of the house, potentially. I think bay windows are 18 inches, eaves are 24 inches, but that's just the eave.
So it sounds like, putting words in your mouth, for the front street yard stoop, you're fine with 25 square feet, but you might want to limit the side yard stoop to nine square feet.
Well, only if someone is encroaching. Only if someone, like, maybe someone doesn't want, there are houses that have their main entrance on the side. That's fine. Like, if this house we had discussed. My objection is that you could have these on the side. So someone, let's say, you know, any house, the one we consider, they decide, okay, we'll build our front entrance, and then we're also going to have a side entrance that's 25 square feet. And yes, only encroaches three feet, but it's still encroaching the side yard, and then on our other side, we'll have another entrance.
Is it safety, is it aesthetic?
It's aesthetic, and it's crowding your neighbor. It's concern for the neighbors.
So your objection is that there might be more than one 25-square-foot?
Yes, exactly. So right now, you can only have a bay window or chimney.
That encroaches to a required yard.
Right, that encroaches 18 inches. People might have one on either side of their house, but this would allow them to build a lot more on either side of their house, I think. And obviously, if it's not, it's not a problem for some houses that are really wide lots, but on narrow lots, and it's, potentially, I don't know if this is ever considered, but as far as access to the back of a house, if you had two neighbors and they each built encroaching side entries, then maybe it would be virtually impossible to get to the back of the house for an environment, or place, or work, or.
I think that's why they have no more than three feet.
They would be allowed to do it, provided they didn't do it in the front, so you'd end up theoretically with the same situation of access.
It could, it could happen, yeah, right. I don't know if the government would prevent that, I don't know. Coming out.
Any thoughts on, pondered some more? Or do you think?
I mean, is everybody, I mean, how does everybody else feel about restricting it to just one encroachment for an entryway? You've got to pick which one it's going to be, or are we not overly concerned that this will be something that is abused?
In my mind, I always thought we were just talking about one, perhaps.
And that was my thought, too. Going back to the original conversation about that property on Gage, it was, yeah, the front entry. So that answers a handful of your question, and from my perspective, the other half was, do we think it's an issue? I don't, I don't know. People won't really be asking for what's belonged, I don't know.
But all along, the intention was to give somebody a little bit more for one entry, and any other entry would have to require, you know, follow the building code, and are kind of our previous encroachment restrictions we had for stoops.
That was my feeling.
I agree.
Slash steps, okay.
So how will that be defined, then? Is it going to be just one? Because I don't know if we should call it the primary entrance, because the next owner may say, this is not my primary entrance.
Right.
I agree.
I think this is something that's not going to be able to be addressed just in table format. I think it'll have to be under that section where it's got attached garages and stuff, and you can kind of do one, two, three, kind of.
So typically, houses are designed with one primary entry. Wouldn't it just be based on design, or is the idea that we're going to allow somebody to choose?
Well, some of them have pretty substantial entrance ways on the side of the house, and you park in the garage, the detached garage that we're encouraging, and then you walk in that door.
I know, I know people, I'm not talking about use, but every house has a front door that faces the street, that is the primary.
Unless they're side.
Unless you're.
Unless they're term on the side.
Right.
But even then, I don't know that you can put a stoop, because it's here to drive right there, so, I don't know.
I just think it's hard to define the primary entrance, or the principal entrance, and it's maybe more prudent to leave it up to the homeowner, which entrance they'd like to put it on, or which entrance they would like to make the principal.
And then give, just say.
And then, in those instances, that larger entry would only be permitted if it's in the, in the side yard, we'd still have that three-foot restriction, but we'd kind of let them gerrymander it however they need to, if it's encroaching into the street yard or the rear yard.
More likely, I mean, these are put into place when the house is built. I don't think there's a whole lot of shifting of stoops once the house is built, so, I don't know that it's really going to be an issue.
Got it. We will have another go at it.
Well, yeah, because on page two of your memo, in the middle, you say, you looked into allowing an entry no larger than 25 square feet to encroach into the street yard. So maybe move column, the first column into the second column, in terms of size of 25 square feet.
Could do that.
Let you guys figure out what that's fixed.
Okay. All right, we will have that ready for the next meeting, then. I'm not sure that we will have a public hearing for our next meeting. My deadline was Monday, I'm pretty sure, and I have not received anything. I have to have my notices to the paper by Friday, but I suppose if some person happens to stop by tomorrow with something, I might be able to scrape something together for the next meeting. But, please don't take me up on that offer. But, but at this point, it's not looking like we'll have a public hearing, but we can have this item on that agenda if we want to. I don't know if you guys feel like you need a break, can push it off to August if you want to, but I'll leave that, guys, that up to you guys, depending.
Does anybody know now that they will not be in attendance July 25?
I think it will be hard for me, too.
Does that conclude the information portion of our agenda?
That would be my informational part of the agenda, yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.